Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome. We have a meeting today. Thanks, everyone, for being here and for those who are tuning in, thank you for joining us via livestream. We're going to begin our workshop today with wrapping up our discussion on the educational planning. We have a vote coming up tonight on some proposals that the administration has brought forth to us. And so we're going to wrap up our questions on this portion. And then towards the end of the workshop, we're going to have a very brief discussion on our advisory committees. So that being said, we'll go ahead and get into the educational planning piece.
Thank you, Dr. Gable, members of the board. Good afternoon. Our sole purpose for our brief section of the discussion around educational planning is to be able to answer questions that we received during last meeting as well as any other questions that may have come up. So our goal is to provide that clarity. There was a request in the last meeting for maps, and so we have those at your seat as well as on the screens. And so I'm going to ask Dr. Bailey and Mr. Fuddy to walk us through the various pieces of additional information that the board has asked us to provide today.
Thank you, Dr. Boone, and good afternoon, Dr. Gabriel and members of the board. On Friday, we sent out some maps, but I understand that you did not get those until Tuesday morning. And so the maps that we have pulled together and working with cooperative strategies have changed. And so what you have before you are two documents. One document that talks about the proposed change for Lake Taylor pre-K eight boundary. Really, it should be K eight boundary eventually. And then on the back of that sheet is the proposal for Norview Middle School boundary. You have some 11 by 17 maps before you. And so I would like to start with just looking at a general comparison of Lake Taylor Middle. So Lake Taylor Middle is shaded with a pink color. So there's a before and after. So if you could place the before and after side by side. Now, we're not going to color anything in here, but really, I just want to talk you through very briefly these two different maps. I also have it on the screen, should you have any specific questions. The before gives you the boundary. The shaded area is the current boundary for Lake Taylor Middle. The areas that are shaded or drawn by the dark green line indicate boundaries for our elementary schools. So if you see on the 2018-19 map, to the right of the map is the boundary for Fair Lawn Elementary and Poplar Halls. Okay? It's a fairly large boundary. That boundary was collapsed together when we combined Fair Lawn and Poplar Halls as a paired school. So therefore, they drew from the same boundary. Okay? And so right beside it certainly is Ingleside. You see Coleman Place where there's like a little slither of pink shaded in there. That particular portion is what attends Lake Taylor Middle. Within Sherwood Forest above Coleman Place, it's sort of like a triangle, if you will. That portion attends Lake Taylor Middle. The triangle that's in Tanner's Creek zone, they're not sure why that's shaded, but there are no students that live there. Okay? We don't have to worry about Tanner's Creek. So as you move to the 2019-20 proposed map, what you see here is just the boundary. It's a larger version of the Fair Lawn and Poplar Hall boundary. I don't know if you could physically see the outline of that. And then with the 1920 is a larger version.
Oh, so this is without Ingleside and...
That's correct. Right. 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 Yes.
Almost a kidney shape.
Right. Okay. Now, the difference is, and I didn't quite catch it, is that he didn't outline the boundary and then the other boundary, so you could see that they have been taken away. Okay?
If I can, I see it now.
Okay.
Thank you.
So if we, do we need to continue to review this portion? Everybody good with this?
I would just say the summary for that then addresses the slither of Coleman Place.
Triangle.
And the triangle portion in Sherwood Forest. Who would now be part of Norview.
Right. As well as all of Ingleside.
As well as all of Ingleside.
Yes. Okay. So if we go to the two that are shaded in blue, we have a before and after. So you can see the boundary for Norview Middle. And what's important to know about the boundary for Norview Middle is that years ago, when we repurposed Lafayette Winona Middle School, we took away the boundary. And so we created Academy for Discovery at Lakewood, which is a choice school. So it does not have a boundary. So they kind of reside within the Norview zone area, even though they're a choice school. So when we adjusted the boundaries, when we dissolved the boundary for Lafayette Winona, Norview Middle got a portion, probably a greater portion. Azalea Gardens got a portion. Blair got a portion. Ruffner got a portion. Okay? So what you see now here is the larger zone area for Norview Middle. It is also important to note that while we changed crossroads from a pre-K five to a pre-K eight, we did not keep the zone for the six through eight students. So there's some students that transition from fifth to sixth at crossroads, and some also go to Norview Middle. So that zone is a part of this. So when you see the live-in count, it includes everybody, and it's rather large. I believe it represents, the live-in is 1,700. Approximately 30% of that 1,700 go to another middle school or specialty program. So other programs they could go to would be certainly ADL, School of International Studies, or Young Scholars. They could seek out of district for the program at Blair. They could be attending Gant. And so the live-in looks a little large, but the actual enrollment is hovering around 1,000 kids.
So it looks to me like the new Norview and the new Lake Taylor, that our non-white population has dropped, and we've added some diversity here. Maybe not as much as we'd like, but I look at Lake Taylor, I see 92, 88. And then when I see new, I see it dropping to the low 80s.
Right. So it, you know, we are addressing the diversity piece.
Right. And that's what I was...
A little bit, yes.
Not as much as we might like, but I see, and I see it both on, and I see it on the Norview side also.
Right.
That it's gone down.
Right.
Okay. Well, you know, that's good news.
Right.
That's one of our goals.
Right. And so certainly, there was a question about the boundary for Fair Lawn. Well, the boundary for Fair Lawn would just be the pre-K two from the Poplar Halls. So from that boundary where you saw combined Fair Lawn, Poplar Halls, just the pre-K two students will then be assigned to Fair Lawn, because that's where we're moving the program.
So the boundary effectively remains the same as current Poplar Halls, Fair Lawn boundary. Those remain the same. It's just where students will be attending school. At Lake Taylor Middle's boundary shifts some with the work that's been done with Ingleside and those other places.
Right.
And will the Fair Lawn staff, as we were told earlier, will that, the Fair Lawn teachers go, I mean, the, not, will the Fair Lawn teachers go on with the children to Lake Taylor and the Poplar Hall teachers move on to Fair Lawn with their classes? That's what we were told, and that's what we've been saying to the teachers.
The intent, because we are not pairing two schools with the same grade level, grade configurations, that the intent is for the faculty to move based on that. And the reason I say the intent, do remember, and you especially understand this, Ms. Campson, based on enrollment projections, there could always be shifts. And so, but the, our plan, because we are not trying to merge two sets of first grades or two sets of fourth grades, that based on enrollment, folks would move forward.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, no. I was going to say, any shifts would be anything that happens based on enrollment projections, but not about the location.
So those teachers can pretty much, at Poplar Halls, figure they're going to be at Fair Lawn teaching the same grade. And the Fair Lawn teachers assume, I mean, I know that we can't have two different cafeterias and custodials and administrator, I know that's going to have to be, but with the teachers themselves, like when we closed Meadow Brook and moved them to Soul's Point School, they just kind of picked up the school and...
Right. And that's kind of what we're doing. There are some infrastructure pieces that we have to address, some duplications. But again, we're looking at what that looks like around the district. And we'll come back, some of that we have to have conversations in closed session with board members because of, you get to such a small number of individuals, you can almost identify it. That's not really appropriate doing it like that. But in general, yes.
Thank you. Thank you. I think that'll put the teachers' minds at rest. Okay.
Question?
So, you know, just to be cautious too, as we think about the diversity piece, because about, same as you were saying with Norview Middle, the Lake Taylor Middle piece, there's about 20% that are also going to a different middle school or specialty program. So that the percentage of economically disadvantaged, non-white, you know, that, that could also go up in theory as well. And same with, yeah, in Norview Middle, because that, the projected is not provided. I mean, not known.
Right. 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 Normally, in our projection model, we don't attach the demographics because we don't really know where kids want to go when they're going from one level to another. So we usually get that piece of it September 30th, when we now have actual enrollment. And then, so then we start looking at it. But our projection model just looks at the straight numbers by grade level. We get down to that level and then type of student disability services.
We improve so...
Yes, I'm just saying, we don't know that we're meeting that goal.
We don't. And, and that is one of our greatest challenges. If we had a 50-50 district, it would be easy to get there. But when you have a majority students of color, and we're trying to diversify across the district, I think our, as we've talked previously, our initial goal is to get closer to what the district's enrollment looks like at a minimum. So whereas it might be 63, 65% students of color, 60%, then ultimately, I would say, our goal would be that schools mimic that 60-40 or 60-38 or whatever that looks like. But again, that requires some other moves that weren't being addressed through this particular piece of the...
But it looks good. It looks like we're trending in the right direction.
So, I'm sorry. I don't know.
Mr. Flim, Mr. Jordan?
Okay. Don't have a problem with looking at the boundaries here, but I do have a question, and that's just based off of a lot of community feedback that we're receiving regarding transportation. So looking at the redrawing of the boundaries, have there been consideration? Or is that something that's forthcoming regarding transportation, making, you know, schedule, how that will affect, you know, moving more kids to a different location? So that's just my only question. I mean, it may not be done now, but it might be just something that's on the way, but...
In, in general, with the transportation piece, let's use the Poplar Halls and Fair Lawn as an example. We already have students who live within, who are closer geographically to the school and already been, you know, once they got to third grade, they went to Fair Lawn. We have students who live closer to Fair Lawn who were coming over to Poplar Halls. So most families who've had students in, for the last several years in this pair model, know that the ride, pretty much have an idea of what that looks like. The piece becomes then the additional mile and a half or so down Kinsville Road that would take now three-five from Fair Lawn into Lake Taylor Middle's site. And so, yes, the routing and everything will be developed as part of that. But in terms of distances, when we look at it, it's not a significantly different distance because those two were paired schools, Poplar Halls and Fair Lawn were paired schools. And in terms of doing that, then that's how we get there. But all, all of those pieces, again, you know, I understand the desire to have every dot, I dotted and every T crossed. But the significant amount of additional logistical work that goes into this is a lot until the board has taken that action. We certainly will come back with all of the staffing pieces, all of the transportation pieces and all of that as part of it. Nothing shifts in the transportation policy. You know, if you live within a certain range, you're already a walker, whatever else. But obviously, Poplar Halls is further from Fair Lawn, so I don't think we have anybody who lives in the Poplar Hall zone who walks to Fair Lawn. So all of that will come forward. But again, it would take us hours and hours to accomplish that. And this is not the direction the board ends up in. That would be, kind of, we could even make some other...
It's just the, we just, an increasingly amount of concern regarding transportation. And even if we're at this particular point and we're talking about changing boundaries, I just think it's something for the parking lot that the board should really place under consideration some other point about transportation, if it's looking back at our policy. And then what we have with boundary lines, I know we've talked about some other extenuating circumstances which may cause barriers for students getting to school. So I just, you know, if it's not pertaining to this, I'd say, but it's something that kind of, you know, that we should look at at some other particular point.
But we will bring, in addition to that, the discussion for that, we will bring all of the logistical pieces around the final act, action of the board.
Okay. Mr. Jordan?
So could you go back and repeat what you said about the crossroads, upper school model? You were saying that some students go to crossroads and other students. Can you just repeat that again?
Right. When Crossroads was originally open, and I'll ask Dennis to chime in as well, they did not then delineate a difference in the boundary for six through eight. So the boundary for six through eight students remained as it is for crossroads feeding into Norview Middle. Now, we know that Crossroads offers the six through eight opportunity there at their location. And so therefore, some students elect to stay at Crossroads six through eight, and then some continue on to Norview Middle.
So the cap at Crossroads is 75 kids at sixth grade. So Crossroads, sixth, seventh, and eighth graders do not have, are not assigned the crossroad zone. They're actually in Norview's zone.
So if you're a middle school student in the Crossroads Elementary School zone, you have a choice between Crossroads and Norview Middle. Is that correct? Am I saying that correctly?
Most of the fifth graders roll up into sixth, but not all of them.
Right. But if you are in the Crossroads Elementary School zone, in essence, you have two middle schools that are assigned to you. Is that correct?
Right.
Well, one is assigned, and you can try to opt in to.
Actually, they're assigned to Norview. Right. So to get into the Crossroads Middle School program, it's not a citywide program. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So it is a attendance zone six through eight that students within the Crossroads Elementary School zone get the opportunity to fill. And if there are seats available, I guess, you can fill them however. So when we talk about the Southside STEM, six through eight.
Same one.
So in the Southside STEM six through eight, in what's being proposed, students would continue to have the choice between the Lake Taylor 3-8 and the Southside STEM K-8. Is that correct?
What they currently, it's the same thing as the Crossroads.
I think it's not the same. I think it's not the same.
No, right.
Well, maybe, maybe I didn't hear, because what I was, and I was in tune to the first portion of the question, you know, which has been the sticky wiki for me all along with how we've done K eights, because we haven't really created true K eights in the model where we had. But I won't get on that soapbox today, I promise.
I'm with you on that soapbox, but...
But similar thing, because the number of students, the number of seats available in the middle school sector of our K, the Crossroads and Southside STEM, could be less than the fifth grade capacity. So what we've attempted to do, so, so there are students, Lake Taylor Middle School is still the middle school, just as we said for Crossroads, for the majority of those students.
Right now.
Right? But that some of the students opt, okay. They all go to...
Campus Stella are all zoned for Campus Stella.
Exactly. So this is where I'm trying to get to. So...
Right. Oh, okay.
This is, this remains my concern. So...
My concern and my confusion.
I'm just simply saying that...
You're confusing actions.
We, the, the original intent was that the students in the Southside STEM Attendance Zone would be operating in the same manner as the students in the Crossroad Elementary School Zone operate. They basically had the opportunity for opting in or choosing to enroll in the Southside STEM Middle School. But their default middle was Lake Taylor Middle. At least, that's what the intent was. What we ended up doing somehow is we made the Southside STEM K-8 the default designation for the Southside.
Yes.
And Lake Taylor was no longer the default.
Right.
But we're saying today that we're still providing this opportunity for the Crossroad Elementary School Zone where you have, I'm just going to say, two options. So I just want to note that, because I still think that is an inequity we need to talk about in the context of this. Where I have a couple of questions. So the, what we have listed under the economically disadvantaged percentage, and just for folks to know, what our goal was, wasn't dealing with the percentage of white, non-white. Our goal was around social, it was around economics.
Which almost looks the same.
Right. So it's economically disadvantaged we were looking at, not necessarily the color of the person. The percentages that you have in economic disadvantage, are these based upon students who completed cards? Or are these numbers based upon what we really think the percentage is? And the reason I ask is, at one time, when we got the first, the John Richter Report, 2014, the Lake Taylor Middle School current and free, free and reduced lunch at that time was 82%. So I just want to know, is it really the case that somehow we went from 82% to 65%? And if so, do we have any idea how we did it?
Well, you know, just off the top of my head, there are several things that could have impacted that. The reassignment of St. Helena students to Blair. Also, then the reassignment of Campus Stella within that zone. And so we'd have to look at the numbers to see how much of an impact that may have been. It could also be because of other types of transfers out of that zone.
And the overall enrollment loss too, could have shifted.
Yeah. If we did it by intent, I mean, I would, I think that's a good thing. But I just like to know if it's by intent or not, or if it's some collection issue. And I guess the, I still have some hesitancy. But one of the other major concerns I have right now is, I think we did a good job of having community forums around the focus of the potential changes at Lake Taylor Middle. I'm not aware where we've had any forms of meetings with Ingleside, for example, where the entire elementary school and the entire neighborhood is now being shifted to another middle school. And I think that those neighborhoods that we are looking at, Sherwood Forest, Ingleside, Coleman Place to a lesser degree because it's small, but definitely Ingleside and a big portion of Sherwood Forest, that we need to give those families the opportunity to hear what's being proposed and to be able to hear from them. So, you know, I'm, and I still don't have real clarity around the impact on Southside STEM. But I like the work that's being done, but I think we owe an opportunity for the families at Ingleside and Coleman Place and Sherwood Forest in particular to have a forum before we vote. And I also think we need to get some clarity around the, the Crossroads K-8 enrollment model versus the Southside STEM K-8 enrollment model.
I can probably answer that, Crossroads one now. Crossroads has to conduct a lottery.
Has what?
Has to conduct a lottery for its sixth grade students to see who gets to stay, if the number of students in fifth grade is above that 75. And if a family doesn't win the lottery, then their assigned school is Norview. They're generally a handful, so they choose voluntarily to go to Norview. Mr. Coleman is just updating you on that.
Right. And I, you know, if we were talking about the last meeting, that we, I know you all working on the whole specialty task force and enrollment and all of that. That's why I think that whatever it is, we need to be able to see what we're saying is going to be for proposed Lake Taylor 3-8, Crossroads, really all of our schools, so we can make sure that we are being equitable in that, in that process, to the extent that we can.
Yes. So let me interject how I intend to address a 3-8 and a K-8 going forward.
Does that mean associated with this?
Associated with the Lake Taylor, since this is the first one I get to really take from beginning to implementation, from concept to implementation, is that once we draw a boundary for a school, then we're saying that is the boundary for the school, and it's not a drop-off at sixth grade, saying that parents then have to make another choice between fifth and sixth. We're looking at the capacity of the school to be able to fully accommodate 3-8 and eventually K-8 in that building. I am, I, I've always been concerned with how we've done Crossroads and then subsequently Southside STEM, because if the idea is that you matriculate in a smaller environment, though the Crossroads and Southside STEM are pretty large, but if you matriculate in a smaller environment and the idea is that you can continue to move with your, your peers, whether neighborhood peers or programmatic peers, if you're a specialty school like ADL, then there would be, yes, an opportunity, perhaps, if there's something special that goes on, which is part of the goal, you know, we said in this first year, to develop the, the culture, the mindset, the, the plan, the brand for what will be an academic focus for this school, that it would also bring the community conversation into it. But that people would know, this is our assigned school, and this is what we are focusing on. And so, um, that's our goal, in that, as with any out-of-district transfer, should there be space available at a grade level, it wouldn't preclude someone from going into the school. But it's not designed as a choice school, either for those who live within the attendance zone, to have to choose whether or not they continue at sixth grade. You know, a student, a parent, family always has the right to opt out and for something else, and we do provide enough levels of choice around that. But if we're gonna call this a three eight, ultimately a K eight school, then we need to plan for students with the expectation that if they start in kindergarten, they can finish at that school through eighth grade. And that's, that's my goal with the boundaries and the information we are presenting for Lake Taylor.
Um, give me just a second. So I would, um, also like to say that the communities at Ingleside, I'm not sure what the level of communication has been with them, but I do think that there needs to be, uh, uh, a intentional focus on meeting with them and getting them to, um, understand what this vote will mean for them and their families.
Well, I have two things. First, on the K to eight model, um, we don't have many of those schools in the neighborhood in which I live. We don't have it as an option, even though Crossroads is very close. And, and parents are talking a lot about how they would like to have that. It seems to be the new preferred model, because I think they like the culture of younger kids having more influence on the middle school than the middle, you know. In other words, it's a very popular choice at this time. Have a parent meeting coming up, and that's one of the things they wanna talk about. I can't wave a wand and create a K to eight school for them. So I think that that's something as we move forward. I'm not saying this is not gonna impact this at all. But as we move forward, what I'm finding is, this is becoming very popular with parents, because, you know, we're losing a lot of kids at middle school, and this is, I, parents, uh, perceive it as being safer, quieter, uh, more comfortable for them. So just something for us to keep in mind, because I know I have parents that talk to me all the time about it, where I am, and we have a K eight school sitting right there, beautiful, brand-new school, and they're driving by going, "Why can't my child go here?" So just to say that. Uh, my under, my second, real fast, was my understanding was that, um, Dr. Boone, back in the fall, gave us a pretty hard, it seemed to me, Dr. Boone, I don't wanna misquote you, um, that she needed to know by February what we were going to do, because as great a job as she does, she's not a magician, and she has to have time to put this in place. And as we know, Lake Taylor Middle needs to have things done to it to be ready, even with it being third grade coming up, not as much, that's why we're gonna do more, we're gonna do more time there. So we're, so when I look at the vote, voting on this, I take that into consideration. Do we want to postpone yet another year, uh, rather than moving ahead with something that I think most of us agree is a good, maybe not, which I feel, um, is a really good move to make? So that's just something we need to keep in mind as we talk about it. Pretty much, am I misquoting you, Dr. Boone?
No, no.
You said that we need to give you a heads-up, we need to give you direction.
For anything that we were implementing the fall of nineteen twenty. February was pretty much our drop-dead because of scheduling and, and all of those pieces.
Not twenty nineteen, you mean?
Nineteen, I said nineteen twenty.
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
We did nineteen twenty.
Thank you, it isn't nineteenth century anymore.
I know, and it's hard.
It's taken me a little while, it's only been nineteen years, but I still haven't quite got the technology down yet. Sorry. But I did recall you saying that, because in my mind, I've always had that, is that that's the time we need to make a decision and move on. Okay.
Just to, just for clarity, I wasn't suggesting that we wait a year.
Oh, I wasn't saying that you did, I was just saying to remind us.
It sounded like what you said, though, was before we take a vote.
Yeah, I am saying that I think we should do it in March.
Well, then we, then we deal, then we would be in twenty twenty. According to what the superintendent has let us know.
But, but I too support, um, reaching out to Ingleside, Coleman Place, um, and the other one.
Sherwood Forest.
Yeah, Sherwood. So that they can be afforded the same opportunity that the Fairlawn Papa Halls, Lake Taylor environment was afforded, to express their concerns, those concerns be taken into consideration before a final decision is made.
Other questions?
Um, so in the presentation that Mr. Richter provided, um, last, uh, at the work session, he indicated that as part of the implementation, the start times, uh, was listed on the, on the slide. But as I understood it, that that's not necessarily the case, that that, we don't need to do the start times for a three eight, but for a K eight, although his slide indicated that it did need to happen.
So when we presented the last time, we talked about what were opportunities around the K eights, three eights, in terms of which stagger, they fall under four, in moving from four staggers to three. And so when we said to the board that we, uh, strongly recommend that the board adopt the change in school start time, but that we adopt it now, allow us to complete the, the work around, uh, making sure we have in place, uh, affordable childcare options for elementary students and families, uh, given the shift in time and all of that, and work out the, some of the athletic pieces and a couple of other pieces, that, uh, we could start this by working within staggers that we currently have, and then move into the twenty twenty-one school year with the new start times there. So we presented them together as part of the educational planning package.
Right, well, he had it listed as part of the, that slide where he had the implementation for each piece.
And so we will just move them into an appropriate stagger, based on ge- geography to make it work.
Okay, that's, I, I mean, I heard that, but I just wanted to get back and make sure that I was clear about that.
Okay, so I'm gonna summarize then. What we're going to, uh, propose to take action on tonight is to have Lake Taylor Middle School for the school year nineteen twenty become a three-through-eight school. That will entail students at Fairlawn Elementary, um, transitioning to Lake Taylor. The students at Papa Halls, which is a pre-K two center, will then transition over to Fairlawn. Papa Halls will come offline. There will be boundary changes associated with, uh, this transition. The boundary changes will include portions of Coleman Place, Sherwood Forest, and Ingleside Elementary to Norview High School, I'm sorry, Norview Middle School.
And so if we, technically, it's, yes, boundary, but it's more about the pathway shift. We haven't, so, I know it's a nuance in the language. We're not changing boundaries for students who currently attend those elementary schools. We're shifting the pathway.
The feeder for middle school.
The feeder pathway for the middle, middle school, 'cause I don't want people to be confused and say, "Oh, now we changed the boundaries for Ingleside." That's not, we're not touching the elementary boundaries. We're just saying, what's their pathway, once they leave elementary school, with the idea of, uh, going back to some earlier work that we presented with Mr. Richter. Uh, we had some elementary schools that were going to five different middle schools. And so if you're gonna have that community connection, you don't get it. And so this is part of that cleanup.
And then during, uh, this school year, there will be discussion, um, with the faculty there about programs, um, through, uh, the leadership of the administration, the program that they wanna develop. Have I captured it?
Their, their programmatic focus, and, and that would allow also that school community, parents, faculty, uh, students, as they come together and others in the community, to embrace and not be told what they, they would be doing, but to be given some options, just like we did with Southside STEM and with, um, um, ADL.
Was there anything that I stated that was not in alignment with what, uh, the administration is proposing?
I'm looking at it, listening for everybody else.
So in, is, in line with that, so are you thinking of, um, instating a school planning and management team like we had at ADL?
Probably not gonna call it that, because the school is already in existence. We'll give it some other term. But yes, we would be, once the leadership in place, once the school comes together and opens, we aren't gonna burden them with that as we get ready to do this transition. We'll let the school year get started, and then we'll start that work with them and put together a, a group that includes parents and others from the community, and the faculty and staff, to help think through and help facilitate those conversations of, of what recommendations we bring to the board later next year.
And Dr. Boone, that would include, I, I think, uh, Ms. Martin had brought up in one of the meetings about the, um, there was some type of specialty program and focus with this particular school, that, that would give us the time for us to, to look at that.
That's, when I say a program focus, that's exactly what I'm saying, they can look at options. But I think, again, if we, if we're gonna give this community some of the same planning opportunities as others had, then we will put that on the table as an option, but not say it's the only one.
So just to be clear, so then, Dr. Gager, what I'm hearing you stating then, we are planning to proceed with a vote tonight and not provide the opportunity for the, the community forum or hearing at Ingleside prior to?
We're gonna move on a vote tonight. And I, 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 I understand fully, um, the, the concern that you have, because we were at a, at a meeting the other night, and, um, the Ingleside community did feel, um, wasn't completely aware.
At the Federation of Civic League meeting.
Right, right, and so, but I can't say that, that, I mean, this information, Dr. Boone, correct me if I'm wrong, this information with the boundary changes has always been a part of the educational plan and the forums. It, it may not have been, like I said, intentional with them, and I can understand that.
It, it has been, and I, I, you know, as soon as Jordan said it, I started thinking about, we did have one public, one community forum with, um, St. Helena that allowed them to express when we were doing a similar pathway change from St. Helena to Blair.
I mean, I know that Mr. Clint had, had brought up a discussion about a communications plan, but I know that this, this vote tonight, um, we have said over and over and over again, February twentieth is when you all needed the time in order to make things happen, so.
I hear you on that, but I also think it's, it's fair to say that, um, we had public hearings and forums at the time that were focused on a variety of things. Papa Halls, Fairlawn, Easton, uh, K eight at Lake Taylor Middle. As a result of the forums and the consideration that we gave, this three eight model emerged. As part of that, we also talked about there would be some pathway cleanups. So we never really gave, so, so really at the last work session, and today is really where we are proceeding down a path where we are impacting entire, uh, in the case of Ingleside, an entire elementary school and neighborhood. And then we're also pulling in pieces of Sherwood Forest and, um, Crossroads and maybe some others. I, I just, Coleman Place, I just think that, um, um, we can do it. And, um, we have the opportunity to, um, be equitable and fair to the Ingleside community. I just, if nothing else, they probably all say hallelujah, we just don't know. I, I think that's been our pattern when we impact schools and neighborhoods, and I think that should continue to be our, our pattern. And, but it's, no, whatever the will of the board is, but if we don't do it, then I'll, I'll end up voting no.
Was just trying, uh, in communication with, um, Mr. Coleman to see what would be the impact if we pulled off the pathway piece tonight and moved to do the community conversations and move that piece into, um, a March vote, what would be the impact on that? And, um, it, it'll make it extremely tight in terms of scheduling. But what we do have in March, we have an extra board meeting on March thirteenth, as proposed, to deal with budget conversations. If we could potentially take the vote by then, I think we could manage the scheduling for upcoming sixth graders at that point. Rather than waiting until March twentieth, we might be able to accommodate, which would give us the next couple of weeks to hold a, a community conversation about the pathway changes for these three communities. It'll be tight, but I think we could pull that off.
If, if you feel that it gives you all enough time to efficiently and adequately do the, uh, transportation assessment, whatever is necessary, then I'm fine with that, because I do feel that that was a missing piece that, um, we, we were learning about, um, with communication with those, with those schools. So, um, I know that you had a comment, but did you?
No, it's, it's right in line with what Dr. Boone was saying.
Does this impact?
Less than a hundred.
What's less than a hundred?
The number of children impacted.
Impacted by the, um, Ingleside, Sherwood Forest, and Coleman Place. Because currently, a portion of Ingleside already goes to Norview Middle, correct? A portion of Sherwood Forest and Coleman Place.
A lot of the Sherwood Forest is zoned for Lake, uh, for Norview. So now that what this does is, all of Sherwood Forest's students go to Norview. Coleman Place goes from three middle schools to two, with the majority of them being zoned for Norview.
That was the big thing Tracy talked about, is how they were cleaning up the pathways, so the kids could stay together.
Stay together.
And you wouldn't go to a middle school where you didn't know anyone.
But I think in terms of logistics, transportation is not a driver of that. But we just, the scheduling piece is the biggest issue. Do they have enough time to get scheduled at the middle school with some of the course selections and things going, so that we can balance out the staffing? And I think if we could add this to, to, to do, to conduct a community conversation, and then to, um, bring this to the board for a vote on, uh, one action item on March thirteenth, which is not our normal time. But if we could do that, we might, I think we can make the scheduling piece work.
So you're thinking of having the community forum before March thirteenth?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Not on March thirteenth?
No, 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 no.
And this is something you're comfortable with, and you feel you'll have enough time? 'Cause that was the concern, because I don't.
The big piece dealt with scheduling. And when it, and, and again, part of that was when we were looking at the school start time is our recommendation to do that for nineteen twenty, which, again, I will state, beginning and end of this statement, that I'm still, that is still my very strong recommendation for the board to adopt the school start change, but with the implementation for the following school year to allow us to work out the, the logistics. I think that's clearly the way that that needs to be stated. But I think, we, because we're talking about a small enough number of students, so we were talking about whatever number of fifth grade students that are currently at Ingleside and, and those three schools. So it's not a very, very large number that we can make the scheduling manageable. But I, you know, I certainly, um, would try to, to ask that we do the one vote tonight for the, the Lake Taylor Papa Halls, Fairlawn piece. Defer the vote for, um, the pathway changes for Ingleside, Coleman Place, and Sherwood Forest until the thirteenth, to allow us to have a community forum. And then, uh, but also do the school start time vote tonight also.
So, so we're voting on creating the three eight school with the movement of Papa Halls to Fairlawn and, and the Fairlawn three eight there, we'll vote for that piece, but we'll pull out the piece about cleaning up the pathways.
That's correct. That, we would defer that piece of the vote, and then I'll also ask for the vote on the school start time.
That would address the concern of other members who have, you have a very legitimate concern. I feel better about that.
I just, um, I'm totally in favor of giving the opportunity for the Ingleside community to be heard. I just wanted, it's, you know, it's two weeks and two days. And so just making sure that we get it, get on it from the administration's side to get the word out, and so we can, you know, and help.
Especially, Mr. Clint, I wouldn't have offered it if I wasn't gonna make it happen.
Sometimes we just gotta state what we gotta state, so we're stating what we're stating, so that, you know.
But I put it out there, and so that means I'm committed to make it happen.
That's good, we can get on thirteen. So just for clarity then, so the Lake Taylor vote. So, just for clarity then, so the Lake Taylor vote would be on the, is with all the full attendance zone?
No, 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 not touching.
We're not gonna touch it.
Get two different planes.
I'm trying to get clarity.
The Lake Taylor, Poplar Halls, Fair Lawn, the pink maps is what I'm asking the board to continue to vote on this tonight.
Right, but just so, but is it not the case that the pink map is based upon the simultaneous change of the blue map? Because the current, because the current Lake Taylor middle school zone is one thing.
Right, only, only a piece of the Lake Taylor middle school zone is impacted. And so, that would be the, the small portion, because Ingleside is divided between schools, so it's not the full Ingleside piece, right Karen?
The full Ingleside.
Full Ingleside piece.
But a portion of Sherwood Forest and Coleman Place that is impacted, so.
Right, but, but in terms of, currently, Ingleside goes to
Lake Taylor Middle.
Lake Taylor Middle. So, to your point, we're approving the concept of what happens with the development of that. Any other adjustments would be as a result of the vote on March 13th in terms of making those adjustments going forward to their pathway.
Right, so we're approving a three-eight at Lake Taylor with the current Lake Taylor boundary?
Yes.
And then, in a couple of weeks, we will come back and then determine what the boundary will be with boundary slash pathway.
The, the pathway, vote on the pathway.
The boundary and the pathway.
Right.
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. All right, sounds good. Okay, so we'll make sure everyone holds that date. I know that you got a calendar invite for March 13th, but make sure you hold that date since we'll be taking proposed action that night.
And the students who are in the Southside STEM attendance zone, they will continue to have the Southside STEM Lake Taylor three-eight option. Is that correct?
That's what I was gonna ask about.
That's another discussion.
That's why I'm asking.
I don't think they currently have that, that's what my team corrected me.
They don't have that option. Say that again, Dr. Boone.
We had some parents who opted out of Southside STEM over the last couple of years. They wanted to stay at Lake Taylor Middle.
Okay.
And we allowed that to happen. The only reason that, I, I think, because of the movement of St. Helena out of Lake Taylor Middle, and, and some of that work, I think just enrollment-wise, it had been, it just kind of worked out for Southside STEM. There are parents, again, we would have to look at the specific numbers, who have opted into Lake Taylor Middle. Yes.
How many, how many kids is that?
Would have to look at.
Yeah, we'll have to watch.
Mr. Coleman said less than a handful.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so, I have additional questions about the Southside STEM. So, right now, we don't see any impact on Lake Taylor Middle. So, I'm, I'm still trying to figure out, with the, with the assumption that we are doing this 70/30 choice, which was a recommendation from a few years ago. We may, if we were to come back and look at it and want to do a different configuration, that could still impact, like a 60/40. If we wanted to look at creating more choice, that could possibly impact Lake Taylor Middle, correct? Or other?
Now, we put some, we're, we're putting a lot of layers on this
Okay.
this whole work right now.
Okay.
Many more layers. Some have been conversations around the edge, some have been direction of what to do. So, what we've been trying to do is see what space is available at Southside STEM to allow some choice options at certain grade levels. Remember, we shared some information with the board last night
Yes.
about that. In terms of the impact on Lake Taylor Middle, that impact has already been felt once Southside STEM became K-8, once they moved into the full eighth grade this year. Those approximately 300 students out of the Lake Taylor Middle School occurred.
Right.
So, any future impacts would be around parents who opt into Lake Taylor Middle, though not its own school from Southside STEM, and if there's available space. And, and, and I see what the confusion is because even I started out, once again, I thought we were, I, I missed the boat on, on a couple of pieces as it related to the crossroads transition and what we were doing at Southside STEM. The fix for Southside STEM is gonna take a little bit longer.
Okay.
We just can't pull, pull it off right now. We're gonna have to do, and, and as I was in the St. Paul's Transformation Meeting last night, in which we are fully aware of the new development on the South Side and in the Campestella area and what the impact that's gonna have on the school. So, we, we, we are aware of that, so just to say, we got a, a bigger project we have to look at as it relates to Southside STEM because now that that community is achieving some new housing and is multifamily housing, is apartments. I think one is 246 units, one is 86 units, or something like that. We have to go back and rethink a whole lot on that side.
Right.
And so, just tinkering around the edge won't get us anywhere near because now, as, like I said, we've been talking about it internally because we're aware of these, these housing areas of what do we do? Because we've got to look at that entire zone. The question came to me last night, well, what do you do if you have more students and you have space in the school? I said, "School Board, then, well, I'll have to recommend some boundary changes."
Right, right. And that's exactly why I keep coming back to this, because we are tinkering around the edges for that school when, you know, just thinking about our goal of increasing the socioeconomic diversity, knowing what's going on with the, the development going on in that area, then how does that impact? Are we gonna come back and then re, having boundary discussions again for Lake Taylor based on any, you know, that's
Well, and
that's the part that I'm
Yeah, and, and this is a conundrum we're in, and I can give you the parallel conundrum is what's going on in the South, St. Paul's Transformation. Because we don't know exactly where people are going to move. You know, we're Phase One, the, the city is a finalist for that CNI grant. And so, in that Phase One, we know there are 187 or so units impacted, but what does that mean for our schools that are in that area? And so, how do we, and then what does the future build back look like? And so, even though we have these, the, the big vision of that work, timing and all of that is exactly what we're dealing with on South Side. Because, you know, that 246 unit one lay dormant for a while, right? Is that the one, Mr. Jordan? It was dormant for a while and then it came back to life?
I'm not sure that's the one. You mean the Campestella Bridge?
Yeah.
I'm not, I'm not sure.
That may be 145, so that may be the third one. But, so, all of this is, is happening, and so, yeah, we, we, because the assumptions of when Southside STEM was built, that one at the foot of the bridge was dormant. That approval was already dormant. But now, these are other housing opportunities that have come up, and so now, that's what I'm saying, we're gonna have to rethink. And I'm gonna be honest with you, I think we're gonna be back at the table again, sooner than later.
Okay.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and wrap up this discussion then. Dr. Boone, thank you very much, you and your team with cooperative strategies for all of the efforts and energy that you put into bringing this to the board, working out all the kinks. Very much appreciate it and looking forward to what this, what the opportunities are gonna be for these students from the 2019, 2020 school year. Thank you. Okay, well, we're moving right along. Did you have one other question?
Well, are we, are we moving off of the ed planning?
The school start time is still part of ed plan, any other conversation?
Well, we can, well, we're transitioning from the Lake Taylor piece of it, but we can answer a question on the school start times.
Yeah, so, before we go for a vote, we, we need to talk about what motion we're putting in place to vote on. So, other than, because, because I, I personally am, you know, I'm dis, I'm disappointed that we're delaying the, the implementation, because the charge was last May to come up with an implementation plan, and it sounds like in the past month was really when Mr. Richter started, you know, meeting with departments to really get at what we need to do to get there.
And it's, you know It wasn't just the department meetings. We also listened to what we heard from the community conversations.
Sure, absolutely, right.
And so, that was part of the driving force for me as it relates to how do we make sure we have the appropriate childcare support?
Sure.
Because, like I said, I was ready to go.
Right.
I thought we, you know, we could pull it off, but that's the value of having those voices around it. And I think, too, to do it well and not have people to come back and say to us, "Well, you didn't do this, we need to go back to the way it was." I want to make sure that whatever we recommend to the board is something that can stand up on its own long time.
Right, I understand that. It's, it's just that all of the perceived barriers, all the things, childcare, they're, they're standard, you know, any district that's undergoing this change, you know, that's, that's what we can expect. And even last May, when Tracy first presented it to us, you know, he acknowledged that these are, you know, you're gonna talk about athletics, you're gonna talk about childcare, you know, work schedules, those are all known factors and perceived barriers to changing start times. So, I feel like some of those pieces should have been anticipated and planned around. And so, my question now is, you know, I get that now, you know, we have, we have been doing, there's been a lot of work that the Division has been under, undertaking, so I, you know, I, I get that. But also, is there, first, I'm, I'm simply asking, is there any way to move that along?
To your point of the childcare question, I think, yes, that, that is the issue in many areas who've done this. But being sensitive to the income levels of many of our parents who currently don't access any form of before-after school childcare, what it takes for us to be able to negotiate and navigate conversations with recreation parks and open spaces where they currently have some after-school recreational programming? Are they able to even shift to meet the earlier time that we need? What's the fiscal impact for them? There, those are the pieces of the conversations that, yeah, we anticipated, but with all of what we've been doing in educational planning, we just couldn't get to having those in-depth conversations. We also vetted and allow vendors to provide childcare in our schools. We also need to have the conversations with them around affordability. A couple of them, I think, have sliding scales, but again, sliding scale doesn't necessarily mean it's affordable. And so, what do we, what do we need to do around that? I'm committed to, to making sure that we are fully answering those questions for parents, to, to make sure that they feel comfortable, they have what they need, and not say, "Well, I'm leaving because I'm, I'm gonna leave Norfolk Public Schools because I don't have childcare options," even though they will pay for them wherever they're going.
Right.
And so, that's the work that we want to do well, so we had enough options for parents. It, this may require some schools that currently don't have after-school care, for parents to say, "Well, maybe I need to see what are some options there for me? Do we need to expand?" And those entities have to have the capacity to be able to expand and put staff on site. And those are the pieces that, that we had not fully navigated at this point.
Okay, well, I, I just wanted to have the opportunity to ask that question and hear the response, but I, I support, support you on that.
Yeah, go ahead. Just in support of what Dr. Boone had said, it was just explaining, in addition to that, one of the things that I mentioned to her today was that I'd really like to, this, I see this as an opportunity to really look at our transportation, because we're making a lot of changes there, and I know our parents are very concerned with that, to, to really evaluate the bus stops and the routes and do a real comprehensive review, which I think, you know, taking the extra time to do that, as other, other districts have done, to make sure that we get that correct is important as well.
And if I can, though, my recommendation, to be clear, is not to the board to delay the vote
Right.
on change of start time effective the 2021 school year. But the vote tonight is to declare that the school's start times will change 2021.
Okay, so that's
And later in the next school year, December, January, somewhere in that window, we be ready to talk about the work that we've done around logistics to make it successful implementation.
Okay.
Carlos has worked on, on a proposed resolution. I'm gonna let him read it just a second.
Summarize that in.
That was what I was gonna ask about.
But when, and, and maybe this can be something that the Facilities Committee, or, do y'all have a new name for it?
Not yet, new name for the committee.
Something for y'all to look at as we're looking at the, the transition is our assessment of our playgrounds and our outside, outdoor spaces, since the elementary students would be getting out.
Here we go layering again. I'm telling you, you won't feel nacho salads fast. You just keep layering it on. We already, children are getting out earlier. Elementary students will be getting out earlier. We don't have any need to address
Well, if they're getting out earlier and if they're gonna be in the after-school center and, you know, for longer periods, since it'll be outside, then they might be
They're inside, but it's the same amount of daylight. They currently get to the after-school programs later and they stay there until six. That doesn't shift because we have them available in after-school programs early.
If I can assist both of you, the, the equity policy calls for a school-by-school report, which includes playgrounds, mobiles, and a whole lot of things. So, it's, in that updating of the reports of the equity scorecards and so forth, in that would also include the status of those playgrounds and other, other items.
You see the work that we've been doing with playgrounds the last couple of years, too.
So, you were gonna get back to the, the resolution that you
I was gonna read it.
Yeah, okay.
No problem. So, resolution of the City, Norfolk City School Board concerning school start times, whereas we recognize and acknowledge that significant national research and study have been conducted regarding the positive effects of school start times, and whereas we acknowledge that a change in school start times will provide for better students' health benefits and school performance, as well as being identified as a single intervention that could provide many benefits for teens. Therefore, be it resolved that the School Board of the City of Norfolk adopts changing school start times effective for the 2021 school year. The superintendent should move forward with logistical planning and community engagement. Be it further resolved that the superintendent reports back to the school board no later than February 2020 regarding the final plans for shifting school start times effective 2020, 21 school year.
My
Does that move? And you just say it.
My request is to make it earlier.
The reporting back time?
Yeah, 2019.
Like?
December 2019.
Yeah. Is that possible?
Everybody good, December?
Dr. Boone?
Idea.
Yeah, okay.
I was trying to get some additional time, but okay.
Yeah, the year.
I was giving it a whole year, that's all.
The motion, the motion activates it happening. The resolution itself, we'll report as early as we can.
Okay.
Or can we have a
Update in the fall. Yeah, we could update you on progress, but our final logistics by February 2020.
Yeah.
So, we could update on progress.
I think so, we can put in the agenda planning, that we have a mid-year report and then the final.
And the start times, just so, the start times will be as what we've discussed now, as defined now.
And the feedback that we got from the board.
Well, as long as that's, then, then I'm fine with that, yeah.
The feedback that we receive from the board.
Yeah.
You know, not pushing any later than nine
Yeah.
for high schools. Everybody got that, Sarah? No later than nine for the high schools.
Right.
And a little bit earlier where we can, and no one on the bus before 7:00 a.m. So, those are our commitments, so within that window.
Okay.
Yeah, we may want to reference, if we don't put those exact numbers in, then if there's a recommendation or something.
Right, that's where we'll come back.
I'm saying in the
I think in the resolution, the start times should be clear and stated and, and then
The realm.
Yeah, the realm, like no early, like I was just, no Yeah, the realm, like no early, like I was just, no earlier, high schools will start no earlier than 8:30, which is the recommended...
Well, see, last time you all gave us a range. You all defined the range for us, today I have to work out the staggers. Remember, we talked about last time, it takes 45 minutes to run a stagger. And we needed to make sure that we had enough lead time in those staggers. But we clearly...
But that gives you more flexibility, though.
We clearly documented... Go back to my notes from last time. See, y'all wonder why I got so much paper in my office. That the range that we presented was elementary, somewhere starting between 7:30 and 7:40. Middle school starting somewhere at 8:05 to 8:15, staying, because they stay similar. And then there was one, it was 8:50 to 9 o'clock. But we were also looking at the issue of the eight, going beyond 8:50 was going to be problematic. So, this is, these are the ranges that we're working from based on the last conversation.
I think we should include that in the resolution.
I don't have like a total objection to it. I just, I just don't want us to pigeonhole ourselves in it. Like, we already know, we're accepting what the administration's already given us. We want them to go back and logistically everything else there and then come back and report to us. We're saying when we get a mid-year report, we'll kind of know where we're headed. And then we're going to get a final one in December. And then we'll be able to go out and communicate to the community. I just want to give them the flexibility to be able to truly do it without tying their hands because then we'll have to come back and change this vote if we have to change anything else.
Right, and I guess that's a changing piece is what is holding me up. So, I was on board when we were putting the ranges on, but now I'm not so much because...
Well, maybe we could use the language of our council.
Oh, you're fine.
Because I feel like...
You said no later, so if we said no later than...
No, yeah, the high schools would start...
No later than 8:00 a.m.
No earlier than 8:30.
Let me try it this way. I really won't have any voice earlier than that. My voice is getting sore and sore. Therefore, be it resolved that the School Board of the City of Norfolk adopts changing school times consistent with the ranges presented effective with the 2021, 2020-21 school year.
I didn't put the ranges in there. Yeah, that's what you had in there.
That's consistent with the ranges. Again, we haven't...
Is that posted anywhere?
No, no, this...
I sent these over for review.
Mr. Clanton sent these over this afternoon. I have enough copies.
No, that's good, yeah. Yeah, that's fine.
That might help, that's why.
Yeah, I sent some recommendations for consideration and then reviewed, that's all.
I can share with you.
If not, I can share with you. Got enough?
Is this the resolution?
The one that he was just reading, I have.
I'm fine.
Is all the same or different?
I think it's the same thing, isn't it?
Oh, I thought he said he...
But you were adding the ranges.
Yeah, I made, but I, what I just stated, I got one. What I just stated is not in there.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, no, within the ranges, I do need one. Within, so the School Board of the City of Norfolk adopts changing school start times within the ranges, how did I say, within the ranges discussed?
You said ranges presented.
Within the ranges presented.
And I was just going to suggest at the February such-and-such work session, whatever it was.
Yeah.
What's that?
I feel like we're going out of our lane.
No, I think...
Within the ranges presented, effective with the 2021 school year.
Effective, okay. Therefore, be it resolved that the School Board of the City of Norfolk adopts changing school start times with the ranges presented...
Within the ranges.
Within the ranges.
Presented.
Within the ranges presented, effective with the 2020-2021 school year.
Yes.
So, if I can speak to Madame Touche?
You have, you have one minute to speak to Madame Touche.
Thank you, that's fine.
One minute.
You got a lesson that you get. That's my new nickname for you. Madame Touche. No, the... No, I know. I think your comment is fair. I just want you to know, my concern is, is that if we don't codify it, what tends to happen is we have changeover, things get forgotten. And since part of this resolution also is communicating to the public what it is that we're voting on, I think it gives the public a better sense of what we're talking about versus just going back to the whole thing all over again, start times, what is it? So, that's why I was suggesting that.
Detail is the kind of detail that we've been said that we give her direction and we let her work out the details. Okay, but I'm fine. So, with what we got.
So, we're saying as presented, and then I know, Mr. Jordan, you made a reference to a certain meeting. Did you want, were we adding that?
February 6, 2019.
Thanks.
And then we'll be communicating that frequently and often to the community, yeah.
Well, you know, this is how good things become great, okay? And this is what dialogue and discussion is all about. And so, this is a very important piece that this division is moving on. And with the collaboration of all, I think this is going to be an excellent move for the students first and foremost and for our division. And we're committed here.
We've done a job of compromising on two issues so far.
Anything else before we leave the topic of the school start times? Okay, so we have about 10 more minutes to, before we go into our closed session. A couple of board members wanted to have a discussion on our advisory committees. And I think that is such a good idea because we have several community members who are giving of their time to volunteer on the committees. We have advisory committees and we have some task forces. And I think that with the new members that have come on, there's been a lot of onboarding that has taken place. And there's been a lot of on-the-job training. And this is an area for us to pause because this does directly relate to actions of the school board. So, we have some policies that delegate what our responsibilities are for advisory groups. And the advisory groups that we have are the Student Health and Wellness Committee. We have the Gifted Advisory Group. We have the Special Education Advisory Group. And we also have a CTE Advisory Group that we have policies for. And then we also have the two tasks force, two task forces. The Equity Task Force, and then we have an Educational Planning Task Force. And I'm sorry, Safe Schools, you're right, Safe Schools. So, what I've asked our clerk, Ms. Jackson and Mr. Butts, to assemble, for those who want electronic versions or for those who want paper versions, is to compile a notebook of the policies, of the plans that have occurred at least this past year and with some minutes from the last meeting so that we, as a board, can get up to speed on what these different groups are doing. Look at the dates, look at who's serving, when they're serving. And then, as a board, come back and perhaps in a work session, kind of discuss if there's anything that we want to change or modify or do we all understand the mission, the objectives, the focus of the groups? I think that it's, they provide a lot of good input to the decisions that we make. They vet out some policies. They discuss policy recommendations. They send that over to the Policy Committee. And some of the things, just for example, that I noticed when I was reading through each of the policies was how their membership is assigned. So, some of the committees have membership that is nominated through the superintendent. Others have a nominating committee. And others are kind of pointed through, you know, some of the other members. So, I think it's a good idea for us to come together and discuss how we want to see the advisory committees going forward. And I'll put some more structured questions around that. If we like things the way that we are, we can keep them, keep everything how it is. The umbrella policy that we have, which is Policy BCF, does talk about when we advertise for vacancies. And it talks about when the board adopts vacancies. And it's actually right around this period of time. And some committees have applications online, some have paper copies. So, again, this is about streamlining a process so that all of our stakeholders are completely aware of the opportunities that are there, that they have the ability to apply, and that they can serve in the capacity that they would like. So, if you would like electronic version of this, just please, and please be sure to let Ms. Jackson know if you want a notebook version, get a notebook version. And then during agenda planning, we'll discuss a time when we can come back and review this. Does that sound reasonable to everybody?
So, just a couple of things. There's a, I'll look at it because I think the, I want to make sure that the policy that we have there is the most recent one that we voted on.
You had sent the email. And when I sent it over to Ms. Jackson, I said to please reference the one that you had sent because that did look like there was a change in the adoption.
We did streamline and that's where the online forum came from to try to make sure that we had this unified process. The other thing I think we need to be clear on, and I can resend the memo I sent, you know, from some years ago when we first started the Policy Committee. I think we would need to get clarity around ad hoc committees, task forces, and those that you described that are by policy. So, the ed planning thing that we've started calling a task force was originally a steering committee. And that got formed through a procurement and RFP process where we said as part of the ed planning, we wanted there to be a steering committee. That's not something that right now we have codified in policy. It was created as part of that ed planning process. And then likewise, with the Equity Task Force that is codified in the, in the policy. But then, part of what we looked at when we were forming the Policy Committee is that there would be times where, for example, the board decided to create the Safe Schools Task Force. And so, it's, you know, the intent, at least right now, based upon that process, is it starts, it ends. Versus the advisory committees to the board are, you know, in statute. And as you mentioned, some of them have their membership determined by statute and others are, you know, by the actions of the boards. So, I just think it's important that in our discussion that we can make sure we're clear on which is which.
Yeah.
So that we don't end up conflating a task force that the superintendent made form with the board's.
That's the point of going into that discussion. Very good. So, then we can go ahead and go into closed session. Is there a motion on the floor to go into closed session?
I'm chair, I'm going to move in closed session.
Their second?
Second.
Ms. Jackson, can you state the motion, please?
Move that members of the School Board and Council go into closed session for the purposes which are set out in subsection eight of section 2.2-3711 of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act as amended for a, discussion or consideration of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific officers, appointees, or employees of the Norfolk Public Schools. The subject of this portion of the session are consideration of the personnel docket of this day and discussion of an employee incident involving a bus driver. B, the discussion or consideration of disciplinary and any other matters concerning students in Norfolk Public Schools that would involve the disclosure of information contained in a scholastic record pursuant to subsection two of the above cited code section. The subjects of this portion of the session are consideration of the pupil personnel docket of this day and the recent student incident of hiding at Norby High School. C, consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members, consultants, or attorneys pertaining to actual or probable litigation or other specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by counsel. The substance of this section of the motion refers to advice of counsel regarding legal issues related to the personnel and student support actions identified above, the investigation of the hacking of the Twitter account, and an appeal in a special education case pursuant to subsection seven and eight of the above cited code section. The vote, Ms. Basine?
Aye.
Ms. Camson?
Aye.
Mr. Clanton?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye.
Dr. Gabriel?
Aye.